Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this study meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Tonight is Monday, December 14th, 2020. We have three items on the agenda that we will be considering this evening if the agenda is approved. And first and foremost, I would like to get a roll call from Ms. Christensen, and then we'll do approval of the agenda. Ms. Christensen, if you could call the roll, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussey?
Present. The six of the seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present. Got a text message about a half hour ago from Councilmember Baloie. He is under the weather and not able to join us this evening, so we will have six members of the council this evening. Council, as I said, we've got three items on our agenda tonight. They're all organizational business. We've got our self-storage review, the city council policy and issue update, and then we'll go into closed session to talk, city manager performance evaluation. Council, are there any additions or subtractions or changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So move, Martin?
Second, Coulter.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Coulter to approve this evening's agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Carter? I didn't quite hear you. Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. We have an agenda for this evening's meeting. And first up on that agenda is a review of our self-storage facilities here in the city. We've been talking about this for a while now. Our planning department has done a number of pieces of work on it. They've looked at a number of different things, and we have a study that we're going to be talking about this evening from our planning department. Senior Planner Julie Farnham is going to take us through this. Good evening, Ms. Farnham, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And let's see here. Sorry, technical difficulties. Are you seeing anything yet?
We were just a moment ago. It looked like the presentation was up, and then it disappeared on us again. So just a moment ago, you were doing something right.
All right. Sorry. Let me just try this again.
There we see it.
And is it one slide that you're seeing, or are you seeing two slides?
You're not in presentation mode yet. We're seeing it still in work mode. If you hit that, I think you'll be in presentation mode. You'll be ready to go.
How's it look now?
Now, you still are on two slides. You got your next slide up as well.
Okay, let me see if I can figure out how to do that.
I think Ms. Wilson, she has the trick to...
You're there. If you go to display settings at the upper left.
All right, display settings. Okay, got it. It was hidden. And I go to duplicate or swap.
Swap.
Okay. How's it look now?
Perfect.
You are ready to go.
All right. Okay, well, good evening. And yes, I am Julie Farnham, one of the senior planners here, and I am joined by Sean James, who is the primary author of this study. So he is available if you have some detailed questions here. And I'll just get going into it. So why did we do this study? So back in the spring, Bloomington, there were some concerns about the number of new facilities that had come online relatively recently. And so there was concerns about that, that particular use. There were concerns about Bloomington absorbing a disproportionate share of the regional demand that's in part due to, while other cities, our adjacent cities, also allow these facilities in their industrial zoning districts like we do, they don't all have as much land that is in those districts. So there's fewer opportunities in the neighboring cities. And then there was concern about this use, which is considered kind of an auto-oriented, low-intensity use, going into areas that are planned for higher intensity and higher employment uses. So here's a quick snapshot of the nine facilities that are in Bloomington. I'll note that number six is the U-Haul that was approved earlier this year and is under construction now on Lindell Avenue. Couple of milestones. So back in June, the council enacted the moratorium, a one-year moratorium, to provide time to study this issue. And then over the summer and the fall, staff did analyze a range of strategies to address this and reviewed those with the Planning Commission back in October. And here we are in front of the city council, looking for some direction from you, so that should you direct us to make any code amendments, we will have time in the early part of next year to get those in place before the moratorium expires. So the study really focuses around these three overarching issues, which I will drill down into. So first is market saturation and really the drivers of demand for this particular use. There's kind of two demographic groups that drive the demand. It's the downsizers or the empty nesters, the older folks. And then there's the younger folks that are moving out of their parents' home or coming back from college or just getting out of college. And Bloomington has a fair number of both of those groups, particularly of the more senior folks. So we have a fair amount of local demand. There's also, it's clear from how that we have enough to, enough units to basically support 18% of our population, and the industry average is about 10%. So that suggests to us that we are also drawing from a broader market area. So we're serving more than just Bloomington residents. You can see here on this map, that's kind of the 20 minutes to a half hour is kind of the draw area for these types of facilities. So you can see where those are. So our market area extends all around us. We have nine facilities, again, eight existing, one under construction. Overall, that totals 7.6 square foot per capita, which Bloomington is the second highest in the southwest metro in terms of that amount. St. Louis Park is the one that's higher than us. I would note that Bloomington, or Burnsville, is just a little bit below us, too. Regional demand, it looks like over the past five years, there's been almost a 27% increase in square footage of self-storage facilities. So it appears that, you know, the demand remains fairly strong. And again, as I mentioned before, there's limited opportunities in the neighboring cities in our market area because of limited land that is zoned appropriately to allow these uses. The next issue is low activity and employment. So starting with the low-activity areas. So as you know, Bloomington has proactively been planning for certain areas of the city to be much higher in intensity, mixed use, and more walkable, really to take advantage of some of the major investments in transit, particularly around LRT and BRT. And then more recently, we've been engaged in the Lindell retrofit study, so looking at Lindell corridor being an area ripe for redevelopment. Another part of that issue is employment. And we always want to maintain a land base that can support higher levels of employment, particularly living wage employment. When we were updating our industrial zoning districts a few years ago, we looked at, we identified several areas that we are calling protected industrial, and we included that in our comp plan. We called it protected industrial. Those are areas where there is established higher employment, larger industrial, traditional industrial kinds of activities, kinds of uses. And so we identified those as protected, recognizing that some of the other industrial areas, particularly some of the older ones, are starting to perhaps, or could be candidates for transitioning to other types of uses. And as you know, we've allowed for certain other types of uses in our industrial code updates by allowing live-work units, tap rooms, and the like. The third issue is really impacts on adjacent uses, in particular residential. And some of this relates to the newer design of these facilities. They are, tend to be multi-story. In fact, our code requires them to be, have an FAR of at least 1.25, which essentially requires it to be multi-story. They tend to be big and blocky. And the new-fangled designs have these internal illumination with a lot of glass on the outside so that you can see the units from the outside. It's a really kind of a security thing. But the result is that it's sort of these big glowing boxes. And because they operate 24/7, in certain locations, these could make for not so good of a neighbor. So as you saw in the study that was included in your packet, staff looked at a whole variety of approaches. I'm not going to go through all of those. I'm going to focus here on the ones that staff is recommending, and then also what Planning Commission recommendation was. So to start off with, the recommendation is to continue to allow them in the zoning districts where they're currently allowed, which is the three industrial zoning districts, and they're currently allowed as conditional use. And the idea would be to keep that. One of the good things there is that you can add any conditions to temper the use based on the site-specific location. So keeping it a conditional use is a good idea. Staff is also recommending that we restrict the use, prohibit the use in other certain areas to address those issues that I just went through. So those are transit station areas, protected industrial, adjacent to Lindell Avenue, and then within 500 feet of residential. Now, I'll just dive into those a little bit more. So prohibiting in the transit station areas, you can see those are shown in the red circles up there, and that's a half mile from transit, existing or proposed transit stations, and that's, again, LRT and BRT. It's not frequent transit routes. That's another category. But those are, these are the ones where we have planned for the most high-intensity uses in these transit areas, so transit-oriented development. Applying this or prohibiting them in this area affects or applies to 60 parcels, and it would make one of the existing facilities non-conforming. And that's the one that's essentially across the street from City Hall, right just west of 35. Planning Commission concurred with this recommendation. The second strategy was to prohibit and protected industrial. Again, the whole point of these, of designating these areas as protected industrial is to preserve them for traditional industrial uses. I just want to point out that not all land guided or zoned for industrial is under this protected industrial designation. And again, going back to that industrial study, we recognized that some of the older, in particular, areas that are industrial may be good candidates for transitioning to other uses. And so we called those transitional. So we had protected, and we had transitional. So applying this, this applies to 70 of the parcels. So you can see the southwest industrial area, which is where we have most of our larger industrial, is all protected. And then it also would create two non-conforming parcels. Also, want to just pause for a second to remind you all about what non-conformity means. These facilities, if they became non-conforming, they could still continue to operate, they can maintain their property. The only thing they couldn't do is expand in these sites. That said, most of these areas are not large enough, that the parcels aren't large enough to allow them really to expand and meet the other requirements that are in the zoning setbacks, et cetera. So while it does create maybe some hindrance to the existing uses, it may not be that much of a hindrance, maybe more of a hindrance if they were trying to sell their property and this was considered a cloud on their property. But again, they could sell and continue to use this, the properties, as self-storage facilities. Planning Commission concurred with staff on this recommendation as well. The third strategy was to prohibit along Lindell Avenue. And what this means is on any parcel that directly abuts Lindell Avenue, so not the parcels that are one parcel in from Lindell Avenue, which there's a big swath of industrial on the east side of Lindell. And so much of that would not be covered under this prohibition. But again, the idea here is that especially because we're in the midst of doing this study of Lindell, and we're looking at Lindell as being an area that might be ripe for some redevelopment for some more intensive uses. So this would apply to 20 parcels, and it would make two of the existing parcels non-conforming, and one of those is the one that's under construction right now. Planning Commission did not agree with staff on this recommendation 100%. They did not, they wanted to be more flexible. They didn't think that everywhere on Lindell, that they should be prohibited. So what they said was essentially prohibit them only in the two nodes that have been identified in the draft Lindell study. And those nodes are around 98th, and that's also a transit area, and then 86th. And I've got that on the next slide here to just remind you where those are. They did also, they even went so far as to say, well, you could maybe even allow them in those two nodes if you had a higher level of design standard requirement in those areas. So again, they didn't agree with the flat-out prohibiting adjacent to Lindell. So this would allow new facilities potentially on properties along Lindell. So there is where the nodes are. So you can see that the 98th Street node really is kind of a moot point, but on 86th, there is several parcels that are industrial underneath that. And the final strategy was to expand the residential setback. So it currently is 100 feet, and expanding that to 500 feet, the thinking being that that would be sufficient buffering to alleviate the lighting and height impacts to adjacent residential. So this has the highest impact. It applies to 231 parcels, and it would make seven of the nine existing facilities non-conforming. The two that are not non-conforming are the two that are right up on American Boulevard. Planning Commission modified this recommendation. They wanted to be a little bit more flexible, and rather than 500 feet, they said that they recommended that the residential setback be 250 feet. So that's still 150 feet more than the current 100-foot setback. And so that would reduce the amount, the number of parcels where this would apply to by 40. So this is a composite that shows when you take all of those restrictions or prohibitions, the blue areas that are kind of peeking through there are where you could build new facilities. Also, I'm pointing out here on this slide that we're not suggesting any changes to the other requirements that are currently in our code. Again, setbacks, there's FAI requirements, they differ a little bit between the zoning districts. There's height requirements, and there's site-size requirements. And again, those differ by the zoning district. And again, it's I-1, I-2, and I-3 where they're currently allowed and are proposed to still be allowed as a conditional use. So just to summarize the staff's recommendation, so the blue parcels are where you could do a new facility, a new self-storage facility. And they would be prohibited from transit station areas, protected industrial, 500 feet from residential, and any parcel that directly abuts Lindell. So that makes seven of the nine existing facilities non-conforming, and it provides for 65 sites that could be available for new storage facilities. I also want to point out that many of these sites that could be available are actually already developed. So it's not like there's just 65 sites out there that are just waiting for somebody to come along and develop them. It would probably involve redevelopment. And so the amount of sites that are actually likely to be available are much less than this. This is just ones that could be when you add all those restrictions that are proposed. And under the Planning Commission's recommendation, again, similar restrictions, except that they reduced the setback from residential from 500 feet to 250 feet, and they felt that it was appropriate to allow them along Lindell, except in the two nodes that are identified in the Lindell retrofit study, so the 98th Street node and the 86th Street node. Or if, you know, council thought that it would be worthwhile to allow them anywhere on Lindell, that perhaps in those two nodes, there should be higher design standards. So this makes six of the nine facilities non-conforming, and it makes 101 sites potentially available for new facilities. So the next steps would be, once we get direction from you tonight, we will do some outreach to property owners, affected property owners, and self-storage providers. We will start drafting, assuming you recommend some code amendments. We would draft those up into ordinance form and get the public hearings, have the public hearings, and do that before June 22nd, when the moratorium is scheduled to expire. So with that, I will open it up for questions. And again, these are kind of the two different approaches. There's the staff recommendation, and then some of the modifications that the Planning Commission made. So with that, I will stand for questions. And again, Sean James is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? I guess I would ask a question that I know that the Planning Commission asked as well, Ms. Farnham. If, given these prohibitions and the restrictions and the number of areas, would they be allowed? And the comment that you just made, how those areas, it's not like they're blank parcels, empty parcels, just waiting for something to be built there, would require redevelopment. And then given the number that we already have here in Bloomington, and the saturation level, and where we are, the role that we're playing, obviously, in the southwest metro in terms of bringing in other people's stuff, because there is no place in their own community to store them, I guess the question that comes to my mind is, why wouldn't we simply put a prohibition on any additional storage facilities in the city of Bloomington?
Sure. Mayor Bussey? I guess that's certainly an option for the council to consider. I think one of the reasons why you wouldn't just put a prohibition would be because these do serve a positive purpose, and particularly if we are starting to develop more multifamily. I mean, some of these areas, some of those developments don't have as much storage. And so these storage facilities serve a, there's a market for them, there's a need for them. So, you know, I guess that would be the reason to allow, to continue to allow them. And again, I would agree with your statement, and I said it earlier, that, you know, the 65 or the 101 parcels, it's really pretty inconceivable that all of those parcels would be available for new facilities. Just, they could be, but to do so would require redevelopment and just the economics of doing that. I just, I don't know that the demand is high enough for that to happen, so.
Agreed. And I appreciate your answer, and I appreciate the thought that staff has obviously put into this. So the second question I have, and perhaps I missed it in the report here or in your presentation, do we have any idea in the nine existing facilities, what their current saturation level is? What's their rate of rental currently? Do we know?
I may have Sean see if he uncovered any of that data in his research. I'm not, my guess is that that was, finding that data and compiling that data would have taken a, well, I'm not even sure how you would get that data, because things change a lot. But I will, Sean, if you are there, maybe I will turn it over to you and see if you have, you collected any data along those lines about what is the, I guess, the vacancy rate of any of these existing facilities?
Mr. James, are you with us this evening?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're a little bit faint, but we can hear you. Good evening. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. So yeah, in my research regarding the occupancy rates, is that the, from what I recall, the numbers were quite low, and it's largely because we've had so many new facilities in the last few years, so we're waiting for those to fill up. And so we don't have more recent numbers with the up-to-date occupancy. But it's expected it will take a few years for those new facilities to fill up.
So when you say relatively low, below 50%? Below 25%? What's relatively low?
Yeah, if you give me a minute, I might be able to look it up here. Don't recall the number off the top of my head.
Even just a ballpark would be fine.
I believe maybe 50% or below that was the last I heard.
All right. All right. No, that's just the general number. That's all I was looking for. Thank you for that. I see Councilmember Lohman with his hand up, and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just before I get to my question here, appreciate that question that you asked, Mayor, about just prohibiting it across the city and what that would mean. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding of really the recommendations between what the Planning Commission had and what staff recommended. I'm really trying to understand on the Penn Avenue side of it, because it looks like on the Penn Avenue piece of it, that you'd be able to have a storage location that's basically right across the street from residential, or am I mistaken with the Planning Commission recommendation?
Uh, Councilmember, um, Lowman, let me just go to a different slide here if I can. Uh, so, so this was the staff's recommendation. So you can see on Penn, uh, there are no available sites because the, the 500 foot from residential, uh, wipes those out essentially. And, and then with the, the 250 foot, um, there are parcels on, on Penn that would become available. You can see the one that's circled there is that existing one that, that's out there that's relatively new a couple of years ago. So, so that is.
Yeah, I'm quite familiar with that, but it's hard to tell in this particular recommendation whether or not, uh, you know, I saw some maps in the, in the staff report and it seemed to make me think that maybe that this would make it so that you wouldn't have light shining into people's, uh, uh, into the residential, uh, front window. Let's say if your, if your front window was right there. With this recommendation, what, how can I understand this? If I were to put a storage unit north of the ones that are currently there right now, the ones currently right there right now. Cause I, I remember driving by there and just being very impressed with how much light, uh, that, that there was, uh, with that facility. Uh, help me understand, are these ones set back on the, the backside or we still have that light issue? Just help me understand is, you know, if, if I did 350 feet, what would kind of take these ones out of, out of play?
Um, sure. Uh, Councilmember Lowman, I think I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. James once again to, um, dig into the weeds on, on this one. Cause it is a little bit hard to see on this map if the parcels immediately abutting, uh, Penn are included on that or, or not. Um, because I, I believe it's residential on the other, on the west side of Penn. So I am not exactly sure. So, uh, Sean, if, if you could, um, maybe respond to that or shed some, some light on what the analysis showed.
Mr. James?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lowman. Um, so that distance from residential, what we're measuring is the distance from the residential property line. So it's, it's essentially a building setback for, uh, proposed or for, you know, a, a self-storage facility. And so today they have to be a hundred feet away from that residential property line. The proposal is that a new building be 250 feet away. And so, you know, looking at the map, that would remove some of that initial frontage immediately along Penn. But given the length of those sites, you know, they could be conceivably, uh, have a, a self-storage building at the rear end of that parcel still. Might be difficult to fit one in. You know, some of those parcels are a little bit small. If you take that 250 feet setback. Um, you know, maybe if you're, um, reconfiguring parcels, they could be combined. And you can imagine a new, a new facility could go up. But you know, that 250 feet still allows a little bit of wiggle room for developers. Uh, staff was thinking more the 500 feet would take really all of these parcels out of play because what would be left is only like a sliver of each parcel.
So maybe let me ask the question differently, uh, cause what I'm trying to get at is, uh, uh, so if I were to develop one of these or redevelop and, you know, put some parcels together, would I have the same lighting that I have, you know, requirement? I'm not as familiar with the lighting requirement, uh, as I have on that existing site that's on Penn Avenue.
Yeah. So Councilmember Lowman, I think the existing site, you know, it'd have to be a hundred feet setback from the, from the front property line. I want to say that one was unique and there was a variance to allow maybe 80 foot setback. Um, so, um, you know, if a new facility went in, it would have to be at least 250 feet with this standard. And then the lighting, you know, we do have lighting requirements for signs and any lighting on site. So I guess it'd be less intense, given that it's further setback from.
So it'd be less intense by 150 feet. Is that, is that my understanding? Am I right in taking that? It's 150 feet less intense. Okay. Yeah. So no, that is not what I want. Okay. Good. Okay. I, I think I understand that. So no, thank you for helping me understand that. And then my, my other, uh, uh, kind of statement that I'll just make is that, um, I, I really like, uh, not only the, the 500 feet piece, uh, that staff has kind of started off with. Cause we could always, my understanding is we could always, uh, kind of bring that back, uh, as it seems necessary. But as we look at Lindale in terms of the, the, the total, uh, plan for that, I think we've got to think beyond those nodes. This is kind of more of a statement to my fellow council members. That, uh, we may want to look from a long-term standpoint, uh, what makes sense, uh, uh, from a planning standpoint, uh, uh, up and down Lindale Avenue. And by, and by, uh, by really kind of putting these storage pieces in there, it reminds me a lot of the issues we have, uh, in the, the Southdale District, there at Southtown District. Pardon me, Southtown District, where we've got a lot of those car dealerships and we're trying to kind of, uh, maneuver those folks in there. I feel like we might be facing that same issue as we look at Lindale, uh, kind of long-term. Those are just my, my, just my comments, um, in terms of, uh, why I think I, I can support what staff has put forward. Um, and I'd be interested to learn a little bit more about what, uh, the mayor, uh, questioned about. But, uh, right now I'm much more comfortable with what staff's put forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, uh, Councilmember Lowman actually teed things up quite nicely because I want to pick up on, on this vein. As I read over the, the notes from the planning commission, you know, it, I see some discussion about, you know, limit, uh, the change from the 500 or the, yeah, the 500 feet barrier to the 250 feet barrier. But there's not any, it doesn't seem to me, at least in the notes, that there was any discussion about why to do that other than that it, it felt less restrictive, which is, I guess, not to me, a particularly good reason to do something. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more, perhaps more clearly about why the planning commission, in addition, in addition to that point, um, the, the point that Councilmember Lowman just raised about the, about Lindale Avenue, the nodes versus the entire stretch there. If you could talk a little bit about why, uh, the planning commission felt more comfortable with that?
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Lowman, I'm, and I may turn to Mr. James once again. Uh, but I, I think that, um, yes, they, they wanted to be more flexible. I, I think that the, and, and maybe this, this graphic is a little bit, um, somewhat deceptive because it's showing the entire parcel. But the area on that parcel where the facility could be built with the required 250 foot setback, as, as Mr. James mentioned, it would perhaps need to be at the east end of the, the parcel. So that would, it would get the 250 foot, uh, setback. But, um, I, I think that they, they were thinking that, uh, between the 150 foot additional setback from what is required today and it being a conditional use whereby additional, um, conditions could be placed on, you know, screening or what have you. Some, some, uh, conditions about a light dimming, um, and, and such, um, could be added on a case-by-case basis. Um, and I think that was kind of what they were thinking. But, uh, Mr. James, if, if you couldn't flesh that out at all, that would be great.
Yes. Thank you. So yeah, that was part of the thought as well, that, you know, that 500 foot restriction. But it was quite restrictive for any new self-storage facility in the city. Um, and they felt that, you know, some of our existing screening standards or, um, with the latest two, uh, facilities with the CUP process. They, um, you know, wrote in that lights would have to be turned off, I think after 10:00 PM or something. So there are other ways to address lighting and planning commission felt that, yeah, the, uh, residential distance was a little bit too far, too limiting for any new facility. I think they also were, um, you know, understanding that there's demand for this use too and residents use these facilities.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, you know, I, I guess I would say to sort of pick up where, where Councilmember Lowman left off. Um, I, I would personally say, I, I think, um, prohibiting them the entire length of the, that Lindale Avenue corridor. I think that's, that would be what I would prefer. Um, I, you know, I think in terms of the flexibility that will be needed to really put forward a, a, a strong vision there. I think that would be my preference. I am, I, I would prefer as well the 500 feet barrier, but I'm, I'm a little more flexible on that. Given that, you know, as, as has been said, it's a, a conditional use. But I, I think we need to think about this in terms of what, how are we going to proactively zone and, and redevelop and so on. And, and the, certainly the sense that I've gotten from, from conversations that we've had in meetings as well as conversations that I've had with other folks is, is that, you know, certainly there is, there is demand for this use, but it, it's not necessarily, um, something we, we, that reason alone is not necessarily a reason to, to encourage that kind of development. So, um, that's, that's kind of where I'm at on this, on this at this point.
Councilmember Martin, you had your hand up earlier. Did, uh, were your questions answered? You're good?
Yeah, Councilmembers Lowman and Coulter got me covered. Thank you, Mayor.
Copy that. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, just a couple of quick questions here. Um, was there any consideration of changes to the other rules, particularly the RV storage, given the changes that we made to RV requirements and storage?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. I'm going to turn that over to, uh, Mr. James to respond to.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Yeah, one of the planning commissioners had asked about, um, RV storage and noted that we have that requirement. I think it's, um, about 10% of the, the site area has to be devoted to, um, exterior storage typically used for RVs and other, um, outdoor vehicles. And so, uh, you know, looking at aerials, those spaces are used. And there wasn't a whole lot of discussion then about either loosening or, or, you know, requiring more with that regard otherwise. Planning commissioners had just noted that, um, you know, it is a requirement and it's serving its purpose still.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next question I have, just to pick up on Councilmember Lowman's questions, particularly related to Penn. Um, cause I know that one is right across from residential and there's some concerns about the one that's there now. Is it possible or practical to, similar to Lindale Avenue, to just not, uh, to prohibit it on Penn Avenue as well? Um, and would that be, um, something in between what planning commission and what staff is recommending? That may not address other issues in the other areas, um, which I'd be interested in too, but.
Councilmember Nelson, I mean, yeah, the, the council could make that recommendation, certainly. Um, I guess we, we haven't. Uh, looking at this map, I mean, again, by starting with the industrial zoning districts where it's allowed, you can see right there, it's, it's only that one stretch between 98th and roughly 90th, um, where they are allowed, um, on Penn right now, because of the zoning in the other areas, it would not allow them right now. Um, so, you know, you, you could, uh, just simply say none there. Or you could, let's see, let me. If you went with the 500 feet, if that's your inclination, which, um, I'm, I'm counting three other council members were leaning that direction with the 500 foot, that, that takes care of those, uh, parcels along, um, Penn Avenue as well.
Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, I was just wondering if there's a way to thread the needle in between it. But in general, just add my comments, I do support the staff recommendation of the 500 feet and the, um, entire Lindale corridor at this point. I think we could revisit it if we find that it's too restrictive and we're not meeting the needs of residents for storage in the city. But, uh, it seems like we have quite a bit at this point.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I don't have any additional questions and I just wanted to chime in with my support for the staff's recommendation.
So everybody has had a chance to comment on this. I, I guess one other question that I had is more philosophical than, than anything. Just questioning, um, putting restrictions in place that would make seven of our nine existing facilities non-conforming. And just wondering about the, the, the public policy implications, the public policy efficacy of doing such a thing, where after we've allowed them, we now make them now non-conforming. And I guess it's just a, more of a rhetorical question than anything else, something to think about and consider as we, um, as we move forward with the rest of this. So here we have the staff recommendations and the planning commission modifications. And, uh, like you, Ms. Farnham, I was counting noses as people talked. And I believe that we have, um, at least the majority who are in favor of the staff recommendations, which would prohibit and protect an industrial parcels on the Lindale Avenue, abutting parcels and existing planned transit station areas and within 500 feet of residential properties. Council, am I reading the room wrong or is this, I, I think this is the direction that we seem to be heading here. Uh, is that, is that correct? I'm not hearing any dissension. Councilmember Lowman, question?
Well, I, I just, I, I think your question is a good one. Uh, and I don't, I don't know how to answer that question, uh, that you've asked, Mayor. But, uh, I think that's a good one. From a policy standpoint, we were, we're basically making more than half of the existing ones. You know, uh, not conforming. But I guess the question I, I also asked myself as I'm thinking about that is, you know, really before this, I don't believe we really had a, a, a policy around, uh, this. And now I think we're trying to set that up. So that's sort of how I'm trying to get to that answer. And that if we, you know, had a blank slate and we could do this all over again, you know, maybe we would have made different decisions, um, um, around those particular, uh, facilities. But I think your question is a good one, Mayor.
So Ms. Farnham, uh, I, I think you said it earlier, but refresh our memories. If a, if a property or if a use is non-conforming, what does that mean for the long-term use of the, of the property? What does it mean? What does it mean for the short and long-term use of the property? And, and what would it mean for these storage facilities right now? If, if we could just kind of summarize exactly what that would mean to, to move seven of our nine, uh, into a, a category of non-conforming uses?
Uh, sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As a non-conforming use, it essentially means that it can't be expanded. So they couldn't do any additions to any of the existing facilities. They couldn't, um, yeah, that, that's the, the primary, um, hindrance. They can continue to operate the existing, uh, uses as non, they're, they're legally non-conforming, right? They were, they were legal before they were made non, non-conforming. So, um, they can continue to operate forever until they, they change to something else. They can continue to maintain the properties. They just can't expand the use. So from a practical standpoint, it doesn't affect their use of the property. What I'm not real clear on is, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, a non-conformity can be considered a cloud on, on the property, which tends to be an issue if you're trying to sell the property. But I don't know that that has, um, practical impact, um, just on day-to-day, uh, operations of the facilities and, and, and operation of these businesses. You know, we, we could look more into what, what might be the implications. But, you know, there's lots of uses that we have that are out there that are non-conforming, legal non-conforming uses that are just continuing to, to operate. And as long as they don't expand, they're essentially, you know, they can continue.
Well, and I think the, the, the potential impacts would obviously come to light in the next portion. If, if we move forward on this, as you reach out to affected property owners, and I'm sure we would hear plenty from them if they thought it was in some way or another impacting their ability to sell or the, the value of the property or, or whatever they might want to do long-term.
Correct.
So counsel, as I said, uh, just hearing the council feedback, I. So council, as I said, just hearing the council feedback, I hear it coming under the, the staff recommendation to prohibit it in those four areas that are bulleted on the screen there and to, to not accept the planning commission modifications, which gave some alternatives on Lyndale Avenue and reduced the prohibition to 250 feet within of residential properties. So I believe, again, if I'm not hearing any dissension by the members of the council, I think our next steps here are to direct staff to, to take this information and prepare an ordinance of proposed code amendments to, to implement those recommended strategies. Is that correct, Ms. Farnham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is, that is correct. And we would also, as I said, start to reach out to affected property owners and self-storage businesses to let them know what, what's the changes that are being proposed.
And as it says in the planning, or as it says in the staff report here, you'd put it together and it would be considered at public hearings before the planning commission and the city council, probably in the late first quarter, early second quarter of next year.
Correct.
All right. Again, hearing no dissension from the council, I think that is the direction of the, the council to planning staff to, to take our comments tonight and, and prepare something for our, the self-storage units, an ordinance of proposed code amendments to implement the recommended strategies and the conversation and recommendations moved forward by staff. All right. Everybody clear on that? Mr. Markergard, anything to add? I see you lurking up there in the upper right-hand corner of my screen.
Yeah, Mayor, nothing to add. Thank you for all the good input tonight.
Very good. All right, then. With that, we will move on to item number two on our agenda tonight, 3.2, which is the city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything to kick us off for the, the policy and issue update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just two items, just to let the council know we're tracking. Congress is still negotiating another coronavirus relief fund package for the country. And I think the, has been well reported in news, the hung, the hang-up right now is regarding funding to state and local governments as well as desire to have a liability shield. And it sounds like the Congressional Problem Solvers Caucus of House members and a working group of senators are getting closer to fashioning a compromise. So we're keeping a close eye on that. If the language that's currently being discussed makes it through, there's about $160 billion of funding for local, state and tribal governments. And the language in there currently directs governors to share 40% of each state's allocation with local governments and that it would be at the governor's discretion how to distribute that allocation. So we're continuing to track that as it moves through, also continuing to watch what happens at the special session at the Minnesota Capitol today, looking to see if there are any updates, and I haven't received any yet. Obviously, the House and Senate have been talking about some sort of relief for Minnesota businesses, as well as a number of other issues that we are interested in. So when we learn more about both of those, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we will share the information when we get it.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. And to piggyback on that, I was on a call, a Zoom call this morning with mayors from the 3rd Congressional District and Congressman Dean Phillips. And he said basically what you just reported, that it was coming down to, the sticking point was aid to local governments and the liability shield and, but they were working toward a compromise. I did chime in with the, how absolutely imperative it was to, to include within whatever PPP structure they put forward, that it absolutely has to include all aspects of the hospitality industry and as well as something for our arts organizations and our performance venues across Minnesota and frankly, across the country. And that, that was well received by Congressman Phillips.
Agreed.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on the discussion we just had, just to make a request first. Staff did a great job, the report was great. But in the future, if we could, if we're going to impact businesses, I prefer that we reach out to them before we do the conversation to get their input into it, instead of after the fact and making them come in during that public hearing type process, to the extent that it's practical. I understand that staff probably wanted a little bit of direction, made sure they weren't getting too far ahead of it, but, you know, it would have been nice to have their feedback on some of these things as we considered it tonight. So just, just a request there again, appreciate the report, it was very thorough, very well thought out.
Point taken. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Good point, councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman?
So I just wanted to let know, to let both staff know and the general public to know that I'm hoping that during our next regular scheduled meeting, that I'll give a little more commentary regarding our levy decision that we made during the last meeting while I was out. I know there were certain folks who want to hear my, my perspective and point of view, and I want to give a nice concise reading of that when we have the general public that I know probably be watching more during our next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Loman. Council, anything additional on the policy and issue update? If not, I would like to move to item 3.3, which is our city manager performance evaluation. And as part of that, the open meeting law and state law does allow for an open meeting to be closed to evaluate the performance of someone, the council supervisors. And obviously, the city manager is the only person that the city council supervises. And so in our review, we will be closing this session of the city council to have that discussion. And I would need council a motion to approve the resolution that's attached to, to close the public meeting of the city council.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to adopt a resolution directing closure of the public meeting of the city council for the purposes of conducting the city manager's performance evaluation. And I have a question after we get this up and rolling here.
Second.
Very good. We've got a motion by councilmember Loman and a second by councilmember Carter to adopt the resolution directing closure of the public meeting of the city council for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance evaluation. Councilmember Loman, a question?
Yeah, Mayor, I know you alluded to it a little bit. We did get a few emails, and I just want to just be sure that we're crystal clear. There are some folks who are asking regarding our, our seventh pillar of transparency, why this part of the meeting is not open. And I wanted to just, if you could opine, or if the manager could opine, or the, our legal assistants, if other cities make these proceedings open to other folks to, to review this and see this.
If I could, councilmember Loman, I don't know of any city that leaves open the direct council evaluation of this city manager. Maybe it happens, I just don't know of any, to be honest. State law does require, if we close the public meeting, that at the next public meeting, which would be December 21st, that we report out as to what the closed meeting, what, what the results of the closed meeting were. And we would obviously do that, we've done that in the past. In terms of just why we do this as, as opposed to the pillar of transparency and, and engagement, I, I think it's important to, to note that the city manager is, is an employee of the city council. And yes, it's a very public position. Yes, it's a position that is very involved and has a very public and direct face, represents Bloomington on any, any number of things. But the bottom line is, he's, he's a public employee, he's, he's an employee of the city council. And I wouldn't expect any member of our staff, for, for that matter, any member of any staff, public or private corporation or agency, to have an open and public employee evaluation. We take feedback from the public about the, our employees all the time. We hear it from a number of folks about the, the quality of work that our employees do. We hear complaints, we get bouquets, we hear praise. But to have that formal and official evaluation of an employee, I think just for, it, it requires confidentiality. It requires that, that, that employee and supervisor relationship to be such that things can be said, the, the evaluation can be done confidentially and in private, with the understanding that then we report out a summary of what we do talk about. Now, for the folks who say, well, he's a public employee, he's, he's the city manager, he's out front, he should be subject to public evaluation. The folks who are subject to public evaluation are typically the seven people who sit up and down this desk. And those are the people who you are able to evaluate publicly every four years. But I will not, I just wouldn't ever consider a member of our staff to have their performance be evaluated publicly. It's just so far out of line, I think. It's so far out of step with the, the norms of, of personnel management. I, I just couldn't ever see it happening, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your, you know, you being forward about that and being clear. I just want to be sure that the public really does understand, you know, the workings of this and how this operates here at the local level and why we really have an advantage at this local level in terms of trying to get done the things that the general public needs to see and get done. So thank you again for clarifying that for the general public.
All right. Anything else to add? Any other questions? If not, we've got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution to move the city, to move this portion of the city council into closed session. Hearing no further discussion? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0, so we will be moving into closed session. After the closed session, we have to come back into open session to close the meeting officially. So council, what I'm going to ask you to do, I'm not exactly sure what I'm going to ask you to do. I think I'm going to ask you to close out this portion of this meeting. I'm going to leave it open, we're going to leave this open, so if this, the public meeting will stay open. But then I want you to log into the separate closed meeting, I think you had a separate invitation that was sent out earlier today as well. Is everybody clear on that? Mr. Verbrugge, am I correct in saying what I just said?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. And I have activated that meeting, so it's waiting for your arrival. For people who are viewing this meeting on cable, we will have a, just a screen that says the council is in closed session. And at the time that you do go back in, then the meeting would go live again to adjourn to adjourn from the open meeting.
Very good. So council, if you could log into the, to the meeting, that the other meeting invitation that we have available to us. Good evening. We are back from closed section. It's 10:16 PM and we are officially back in open session here in the Bloomington City Council. Chambers and all six members of the Bloomington City Council are, again, present. And with the completion of our business, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening.
I'll second Jenna Carter's motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Carter and a second by councilmember Loman to adjourn this evening's meeting. Because Ms. Christensen has called it a night, I will call the roll for the council. Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Coulter?
Aye.
Councilmember Loman?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie also is aye. We are 6-0 to adjourn. We are officially adjourned. Thank you all very much for being with us this evening. Thanks for staff, to staff for sticking with us and thanks, councilmembers, for a great discussion. Thank you much. Have a great night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night, folks.